Actually, I told them I was gonna get them out.
I'm taking my seventy.
All right. So, here we are at the first budget workshop for, on February nineteenth, for the next fiscal year. And I'm just gonna turn this over to the two of you.
Yes.
Phil and Megan.
Sure. So, we do have, I think, one new member on the Budget Committee, right? Eric. So, everybody doesn't know Eric.
Eric.
We have lost Owen Cassas also has resigned from the Budget Committee, just so that you're aware of that as well. So, we do have a vacancy. So, I thought tonight, obviously being the new guy, I'm sure I do different things a little bit differently than my predecessor. Maybe, I'll just say that they're different. They may be worse, they may be better. That's up to you guys to form your opinion on. But I'll start off with giving you an overview of my budget process and what I look like, what I look at in the budget. And I said a little bit of this at the Budget Workshop back in September, but I don't pay attention to LD1 until I get to the end of the budget process. I look at, I encourage the department heads to put in their requests as they deem necessary. And so, in those requests, you'll see, for instance, in the paving, road construction line, there's $788,000. Well, that's, as you know, those of you that have been on this committee and on the Select Board, that really is the number that we really should be shooting for. Obviously, I've cut that number down, but that is the number that's there, and you see that, so we can have that discussion. Once I sat with the department heads or committee chairs and reviewed their budget requests, then I took a hard look at all the numbers. In some cases, I may have increased numbers based on some things that I might want to initiate. More often than not, I've kept them the same, because I agree with what the department head is requesting, and there are some reductions as well. So, you'll see those in there. Once I've put all the numbers together, revenues, expenditures, and looked at the net budget, then we calculated the LD1 requirement. And I will say that, and it's in my PowerPoint too that we'll get to shortly, but after doing, putting all the numbers together, the budget is about $51,000 over LD1. So, not too far away from that, away from that cap anyway, which I thought was, was pretty good. Because there's a lot of, there's some new initiatives within the budget that you'll see and that we'll talk about and discuss. And so, we'll go from there. So, I guess we'll start with the PowerPoint. So, why is the budget important? And you've seen some of these things before. Obviously, it details and explains how the town will spend the taxpayers' dollars. It's used as a planning tool for department operations, so we can look at management plans, what it is that we're gonna be doing for the next year in each department. It's always a best guess. We're looking, in some instances, eighteen months out, so it's always a best guess. But it does give us, it does act as a planning tool. It's obviously tied to the capital improvement plan, which has been, been a good document that's evolved over the past several years. I will say on that note that I haven't, I've just continued the capital improvement plan as it is. I haven't had the chance in the first six months really to dive into that and dissect it and really work on that. Megan and I have talked with the Chair of the Capital Improvement Committee, and we'll be meeting probably starting in April, once we wrap this process up, to start reviewing that for next year and really get into the nitty gritty of that as well. And there will be some changes, obviously, because of the infrastructure bond that was approved last November, so we'll be working through that. And the budget is important because it shows the foundation of all the work to be completed in the fiscal year, as I said, with the management plans from the different departments as well. Touch base on the LD1 cap a little bit. And as you've, as you know, my philosophy on the property tax levy limit is that it's, it's a good idea for a limit when economic growth is strong. It doesn't work so well when there's slow growth or no growth at all. I feel it handcuffs communities when our prices continue to increase but have a limited increase in the, in the cap. And Amanda Rector, I've, I've talked with her about this before, and this was noted last year as well. She says that it basically has outlived its usefulness because it's intended to limit spending in times of growth instead, and not in times of slow, slow growth. So, if you look at our limit for the next fiscal year, it basically comes out to just over 4.2 million. And as I said, the proposed budget exceeds it by 51,710 is the exact number. There are three main factors that you can look at. This will be the first year of the principal payment for the library bond, which is $75,000. Also, we've built in there, in the budget, $58,200 for the Walker Park seawall construction project. The engineering for that has all been done. We had a great opportunity with the neighbor, the, the abutting property was for sale, has been purchased, and the neighbor is reconstructing their portion of the seawall. So, we have the opportunity to be able to do ours as well. I know that's been discussed in previous years, and there was a number that was thrown out there, $400,000 for that reconstruction. So, I'm very happy that it's at 58,200. That's not the lowest bid that we've received. So, I'm, we're still doing research with the low bidder to see if they can actually take on the work. So, that number could decrease as we go forward. At the same time, we'll be applying for, for grant funding for that as well. My philosophy is always that if we, if the budget does get approved with that number in there and we don't need it, obviously, we'd spend the, the grant money. We would have to have a match, and then that money could be moved by the Select Board into a reserve account or just not spent, and then it would roll into an undesigned fund balance. One other aspect here of the LD1 limit is that in the current year, we're using $160,000 of undesigned fund balance, also known as surplus for, in layman's terms. This budget proposes using nothing from undesigned fund balance, and we're still only $51,000 over. So, I think it's important that one of our goals is to increase the undesigned fund balance. And we can get to that a little bit later in the, in this show here. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on the fiscal year changes, a lot of this information you had last year for sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen. Just to do a reminder for fiscal year nineteen and twenty, there was an increase of $125,000 and change. There was $35,000 in the administration budget, which is no longer there. That's been reduced, because we don't need that. And then the harbor boat launch, float reserve, pathways reserve, and debt service increased. The debt service was the interest payment on the library bond, just if you're wondering what those, what that was. And the pathways reserve was for the Route One sidewalk project, which still hasn't been built, but is still in the process of planning when it will be built. And there's a graph that will show you the increases in the municipal budget over the past several years as well. The graph showing the tax rate changes in allocation, we did have an increase in the tax rate of not quite a dollar this past year, keeping in mind that we are now, the municipal budget now accounts for less than 25% of the tax rate. So, there's obviously a lot of items that are not in our control when it comes to the school budget and the county budget. I will say that the county budget this year, the state valuation is always a couple of years behind, and that's what the county valuation, county tax is based on. We, the county, the state has caught up with the decrease that the town had suffered a couple of years ago with the subdivision down, down in Clam Cove being reduced. So, the county budget actually for us is decreasing the county tax for this next year, which is good news in a way, but bad news how we had to get there. The unassigned fund balance, so you do see the calculations here. The charter says that we have to maintain 12% level in the unassigned fund balance, which is roughly $2,500,000. We are over that. We currently are roughly at about 17% or so. We, the balance that we have in undesigned fund balance is an unaudited number at this point. I've been very frustrated with our auditing team, and we were probably making a change. They're two months overdue in getting us our numbers, which is very difficult for budgeting purposes. We, we don't have solid audited numbers for reserve accounts, for example, as well as the undesigned fund balance, but that's our best estimate at this point. When it comes to the undesigned fund balance, I'd like to see, and, and auditors and, and different firms will recommend between sixty and ninety days worth of fund balance, which would get us up, the ninety days would get us up to 25%. I think we need to do a little bit of work there. In my, in my first six months before tax payments came in in the fall, there was the time when Megan and I had to sit down, and Megan said, "You gotta tell department heads to keep their spending to a minimum based on what's, what's needed." And that's not a good situation to be in for any community. We obviously don't wanna borrow with a tax anticipation note. We end up paying more interest. That's not a good thing, spending more money. So, if we can increase that, we can also then build a plan, so that if there are years where we have a lot of one-offs, for example, as Mark has called them in the past, I believe, that we can absorb those with, using some of that fund balance, so that we can keep the, the tax rate steady and not have increases in it, hopefully. As for this year's budget, for your information, the mill rate, the tax rate impact, for every 9,660 of spending equals approximately one penny for the tax rate. Of course, that's assuming that the valuation stays the same in the community. Ideally, the valuation is growing, and we will see, I think, an increase in valuation. We have lost some value to new conservation easements and new property going into open space and the like, especially around the Main Water Company. That's about a one and a half million dollar loss. It's another piece on the harbor, on the Bochum Point side. That's also about another one and a half million dollar loss in value that's going to Coastal Mountain Land Trust as well. So, that's recent. I don't think it's, I don't think it's been announced yet. So, we will see those decreases. We have had some pretty decent building permits for residential. Obviously, the Physicians Building at Penn Bay Medical Center, that is not a tax exempt building, so there'll be personal property there as well as the structure. It won't be complete as of April first, so we won't, certainly won't get a full impact on that for, for the next fiscal year, but this year after we will. I don't have a rough estimate as to what that value might be, but looking to the future, there is some growth there as well. And then the potential of the hotel in the downtown area, however that is in the downtown TIF as well, so we have to keep that in mind. The budget goals for this next year, to propose a budget that meets the immediate needs of the community, a budget that plans for the future, that looks at the capital improvement program, also tries to anticipate any expenses that may come up through the year. Most important, as far as I'm concerned, is be considerate of taxpayers' ability to pay. Always, I always have an eye on what the tax rate is going to do. And may, but maintain an investment in the infrastructure equipment and especially people, I think is very, is a vital component, is to make sure that our people are taken care of, enjoy their jobs, have competitive pay. Costs a lot more money to replace people and train them than it does to keep them happy, as far as I'm concerned. Some of the key changes in the budget, I've talked about these a little bit. The library bond principal payment, that's the first year of that, it's 75,000. The infrastructure bond, we'll be paying some interest, we'll most likely be taking out a bond anticipation note, also caught a ban. And we'll be paying interest on that as we draw down and use it. And we'll talk more about the infrastructure bond, I'm sure, and the public works. But the goal there is that we'll be using it over eighteen months, two-year time period. Definitely be two construction seasons, because there's a ton of work there that needs to be done. We will be hiring contractors to do quite a bit of that work, so that Public Works can continue doing their regular work. There are some things that Public Works can do as part of their regular work, but a lot of it will be contracted out. I've made a change in the administrative assistant positions for planning, assessing, and police department. They're two separate positions currently. Shortly be, after I started in August, the full-time person in the, there was the administrative assistant in planning, assessing, and codes left us, and I replaced that with a temporary part-time employee. And while I was reviewing the operations, I decided to combine the part-time police administrative assistant and the part-time administrative assistant in planning, codes, and assessing into one full-time position. We end up basically seeing a reduction of about $28,000 because of that combination. It also will give better service to those that are seeking police department incident reports, accident reports, weapons permits, that type of thing, because that person will be available forty hours a week. And then we have the Walker Park seawall. We had had money in the budget to do the preliminary engineering plans and permitting, which we had done earlier this spring. So, the 58,200 is the construction cost that we've got from the bids, as well as the contract administration inspections and the like during the project. There are other changes that are in the budget that we'll discuss as we hit on each individual department. So, in closing, the budget balances the needs of department heads and committee requests with a desire to mitigate the tax impact while also looking to the future. It is proposed to exceed LD1, as I said, but it doesn't use any undesigned fund balance. And I look forward to working with the Budget Committee and the Select Board as we work through the process and have a good fruitful discussion. Any questions to begin with from that, or do you wanna jump right in to the departments?
I think we're ready to jump.
Jump right in? Okay, so the first, first budget is a Conservation Commission budget, which is on page 217. And actually, the detail is on page 218. And again, I'm sure that I'll do these differently than before. What I like to do when I'm reviewing each independent, each individual department request is that I'll highlight where the changes are, give some reasonings as to what those changes are, and then open it up for questions. We do have the Chair of the Conservation Commission here, Kim Kimble, behind us all. And so, I've also told my department heads and committee chairs that have requests that I have no problem with them advocating for their requests. So, I'll tell you why I'm recommending a number, and if they feel real strongly that their number is a better number than mine, I have no issue with them saying that to the Budget Committee and the Select Board. And it's certainly up to, to you folks to decide what you wanna fund to your community. So, you're the ones that should be deciding that, which you are. So, in this budget, there's quite a few differences from the previous year, starting off with the, with the first line, 3010. And essentially, this is going from $100 to $500. Looks like a huge percentage increase. It's not a lot of dollar money, dollar amount, increase. And basically, what this will do is archive the historical water quality data that, that the commission has acquired over the years, so that we don't lose that data. I'd much rather have it available for us to be able to review and to chart and graph over the years. So, that's what this is, this would be doing. Line 3805, advertising, the commission had requested $3,000. There was nothing in the budget for the current year. I reduced that to 1,000. The reason that they're requesting that amount for advertising is so that they can, they wanted to print rack cards, for instance, outreach, public surveys, to write articles, maybe send out some mailings. If you've reviewed your budget, you know that I'm proposing a townwide newsletter that will be distributed six times a year. So, I reduced this by $2,000, because I feel we can use that newsletter to do, to accomplish a lot of the goals that the Conservation Commission had in, in this budget number. And that fall, under the printing line, that was increased from 250. My number's 500. They requested 1,000. I definitely support what they wanna do with printing, but I think we can do a lot of it in-house as well. Under Training and Education, line 3920, you can read the notes there that they've requested. Basically, they're looking at $50 a month for twelve months to collaborate with Coastal Mountain Land Trust, to have discussions at the, either the library or the Opera House, which I think is a, is a good thing to do, to educate the public. And then $500 to, their goal is to train a high school STEM student, science, technology, engineering, mathematics student, to look at grants, write grants, and work with the commission basically on that. And then in turn, that money would be awarded to the student. And Kim, you certainly can speak to that probably better than I can about the...
The proposed STEM expansion of the high school. We don't really have an in at the high school at this point, but we're hoping by luring children, children, high school seniors probably, offering them, we would teach them the abilities to write a grant, and we wouldn't pay them, but we would maybe buy them supplies to do a project or something that we would probably bring to the Select Board first. Obviously, it was just an expansion idea of getting the high school more involved environmentally. I think we struggle there.
Yep.
Is there still an environmental committee at the high school?
The wind planners are still, yes, very...
Wind planner, yes.
Yeah. They're busy. They're very busy.
Great.
One question.
Yes.
The, so you're going to train them to write grants presumably for projects that then the commission would, would do for the town? Is that what you're...
Yeah. Ultimately, it would be for the town of Rockport. And, you know, it's hard to say at this point, it's sort of a growing idea, and all of your input is really appreciated. We were just trying to think of a way to encourage students, so that was our first thought. Teaching them to apply for a grant, and then they would receive the money, hopefully federally or statewide. And then if they needed some supplies to build this project, that's where that 500, it's not a lot at the end of the day. I don't know how much we would get done, but it was a step forward in seeing if that would be accepted.
Any other questions on the Conservation Commission? Okay. Great. Next up is the Parks and Beautification budget on page 221.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
I, I think there is a little process issue here, and I'll take about a third of the blame. Maybe Mark can take a third, or Mike can take a third, because apparently Honani wasn't notified at this meeting tonight. You know, I should have done it, but she's been very involved in the process. And when we found out that she was on the agenda, she's very upset that she couldn't be here to defend it.
Well, I apologize for that, Doug. And I know she has been very involved, and I appreciate her work as well.
Okay.
I think we probably can speak pretty good for her.
Yeah, I, I think so too, but just, you know, in the future with other people, let's make sure that if they're on the agenda, they're notified.
Absolutely. So, there are several changes as well in this, in this budget too. Starting off under line 3090, miscellaneous contracts. There's $2,500 in there, and basically, that's added in there to assist with brown-tailed moth remediation. As you know, it's been a major issue. I don't know how much more I need to say about that, but we do have some funds that I've identified in this year's budget that we're going to use at March Jones Fields. We are working with an arborist, a local company, that will hopefully be doing a demonstration at Walker Park, and he'll be pruning the trees. There's a couple of oak trees there that have severe infestation, the nests at the top of the trees. He'll be pruning those, and then the plan is to inject the trees as well. He's gonna be doing Walker Park at no charge, so that he can do a demonstration for the public of his new equipment. And then we're gonna be paying him to do some work at March Jones Fields for that. And then you have to continue the process. You can't just do it one year. You have to continue monitoring and treating the trees and trimming as well, the nests out, so you can hopefully, won't be able to solve the problem, but hopefully we can mitigate any impacts that the brown-tailed moth have on, on residents and people that are using the ball fields, for example.
So, is this 2,500 here just for the parks?
That's just for parks.
So, March Jones is under recreation?
Is a separate, yes, yep. Yeah, and there's more money in the margin, the recreation budget for it, because there's more, more trees, obviously, that are affected there. And if there are other parks that are affected, then it will allow us to have some funds to be able to address them. But we, we've looked at them, and there's really, Walker Park is the, is the main one. Down under line 3630, the mowing, these are contract increases. The new, new contract was in effect for this past mowing season, so that's what those prices are. Underline 5310, supplies, agriculture and botanical. The Parks and Recreation Committee had requested $300 for the purchase of a ten-foot Christmas tree, and $400 each for seven additional two-and-a-half inch thick trees for Memorial Park. I left that number in there. I think that is reasonable. Helen?
Got a question. In the past couple of years or so, and I don't recall exactly what the thing was, it was under my impression that the town did buy some trees to be planted over Erickson Farm.
Yes.
Are, are these not, are those not acceptable for the Memorial Park? I thought that was the intention of them.
We've discussed that, I've actually discussed that with Doug. And the, the trees that are at Erickson are ready to be transplanted, some of them are, but they're very small. So, we may utilize some of those. They will definitely be utilized hopefully in other parks. I talked with Doug about that. But at this point, they're so small that really they wouldn't be adequate for Memorial Park at this point.
Yeah, I have a meeting with Rich Lerman tomorrow to talk about what trees are available for the various different parks, so we'll be doing that. Also, we have a donor who has stepped forward to help with the purchase of some trees in the park too, so that'll help alleviate some of this cost, I hope.
Okay, good. 5340, general maintenance and supplies. This is increasing by 1,200 to cover the cost of reshingling. The, at Harbor Park, the roofs that go over the, over the picnic tables, those need to be done. And $1,600 to cover cost of conduit and wiring in Memorial Park. We're gonna be having some plantings in there. We need to have water run as well as electrical to run the lights and things like that for the decorations around the holiday season as well. So, that'll help cover the cost for that. Signs, 5380. That's a request from the Rockport Parks and Beautification Committee for a sign for Walker Park, to replace the sign that's there.
There's no sign there.
Well, there is no sign there at Walker Park now, right? And then line 5415, that increased by 1,200 over the previous year. And again, you see the reasons why. It's $1,000 requested to continue the work that the Parks and Beautification Committee really started last late summer to really spruce up the parks and the other areas, like the intersections where the signs are, that, that type of thing. And $200 for additional mulch at Memorial Park as well. Under the capital items, this is where you'll see Walker Park seawall, this line 7347. And again, we're still investigating the low bidder there, so that number may be able to be decreased if the low bidder seems to be adequate to be able to do the work. And unfortunately, we, we have to bid, we have to build in the budget the project cost, even though we may get a grant, as I mentioned before. It's, it's pretty likely that we will get a grant for that, but we'll obviously have a match, because the project basically is shovel-ready. The permits are in place. We're ready to go with, with the project. So, we should be able to get a grant for that. The park benches, so the Parks and Beautification Committee, this is line 7348. The committee requested, I believe, seven benches to be purchased. I reduced that to two, simply because of the, the impact on the budget itself. Helen?
Last year, there was a discussion of having naming opportunities for the benches. I thought they were gonna buy two. Is that different from what's here?
One has been ordered, and it's just really, I guess it's just about ready. There was a six-month lead time. That's just about ready. We do not have a name for it yet, but we haven't really done our advertising yet.
So, this is sort of a placeholder for the budget until we get money, people who are in effect buying benches? Okay.
It should be a self-paying program once we get rolling.
Right.
Hopefully, yes.
And so, you've approved a sec, two more benches in addition to what we had in this year's budget?
Yes, we've got one coming.
One.
One coming.
Momentarily, yep.
And then you knocked it down from four to two for two additional ones?
I knocked it down from seven to two.
Seven to two, sorry.
Yeah, for two additional ones.
We had 4,800. So, we had two benches in the budget last... We had forty-eight hundred, so we had two benches in the budget last year.
Right.
That's what I thought, and we stopped at two.
Right, two, and then we went ahead with one, sort of holding off until later in the year to get the second one.
I believe those first two benches from last year, we talked about possibly putting in the harbor, these seven benches were asked for for the.
Memorial Park.
Well, Memorial and Mary Lee.
Right.
But we'll, we'll, we're more than happy with just.
So, so there's actually a couple of things going on there, trying to get a couple of benches in Memorial Park as well, along with, you know, updating and keeping all our benches matching.
Yeah.
And, and there is the policy in place about the honorary bench program, so once we, we get more advertising for that, hopefully, we will find somebody that will participate in that, and then we'll start, it'll start being a self-funded program moving forward.
I guess I was sort of into the impression that we weren't going to be ordering benches and paying for benches until we got people who stepped forward and wanted to pay for benches.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the path, the Parks and Beautification Committee had felt that if we could order one and have it almost as a showpiece, so that people could see that.
And then when we got orders and naming and orders and everything for more benches, then we would order more benches, and it would be sort of, you know, a pass-through or, or, pass-through or ma- money maker, actually. But that we weren't going to actually use town funds to outlay for the benches.
And we could do it that way.
That was my understanding.
That was the original intent, you know, when I, when I saw seven, I was taken a little bit aback. When I thought it'd been cut to two, I thought, well, I'll take two.
And yet there's still one to be bought, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, of course, we'll discuss all this when it comes to the cutting and the whatever, because I think there's a couple of things that are not in here. Well, you know, like broad, you know, I mean broadband surveys or whatever, I mean, there's a lot of other, I think there's things that aren't.
Legitimate question, definitely.
So is the question whether we should consider revenue here as well, offsetting revenue, or is that not on the table?
Well, it, it can be. I mean, if you look down on the revenue side here, in, in this year's budget, we've got forty-eight hundred dollars for revenue. We're probably not going, we're not going to hit that. We may, we may, I, it's hard to say, but at this point, I mean, it's February, and of course, people aren't thinking about benches in February, so.
It's still a potential, yeah.
Yeah, so, and I didn't list any revenue in there currently. We certainly could offset that number. Maybe we purchase one and.
And what's the price per bench?
Twenty, twenty-four hundred.
No, I mean, what do we get if somebody wants to buy one?
Five thousand, yeah. And obviously, the number that's in the budget was different from when we adopted the policy. We adopted the policy well after the budget was, was put together for this year.
Does the bench stay in place and the plaque is attached to it, or do you have to remove the bench and do something to it?
The plaque will attach to the bench, so the bench will stay and the plaque can move. Yes, and is it a ten, is it a ten-year?
Ten-year lease.
Lease for the, for the plaque on the bench.
I think we agreed, correct me, but I think we agreed to replace the plaque once for the amount of money that they paid for it, and then after that, it was on them if it got stolen.
Yeah, there is language about that in the policy.
Just, because a couple of people having gone through the process before, you know, we talk about these issues, and just because we pass on something, you know, we don't write, it doesn't mean that it's approved. Yeah, that we haven't made a decision, because, you know, we have to get through everything, and then we start whacking things off.
Right, but it makes sense to, to look at the whole budget first.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
And then go back and revisit those things that you want to look at. Yep.
Okay.
Lime kiln restoration. So I put four thousand dollars in there. It's one of these areas where Legacy Rockport just met last night and had a presentation from a professional mason essentially on restoring the, the lime kiln that's closest to the Harbor Masters Building. The number is scary, so I don't even need to throw that out there. It's like a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so.
For one kiln.
For one, for one. There are grants available. They're not very large grants, but that's the very starting process essentially. Legacy Rockport has decided to agree to fund a closer examination of that lime kiln with the mason. So he's putting together a more detailed report for Legacy Rockport.
He was going to get back to you, because we were going to meet maybe next week fairly soon, because there was some concerns as well.
Well, and one thing noted was that the retaining wall actually with the road into the harbor is of a bigger concern, the kiln.
Yeah, but I think once he does a more, a closer examination, it makes more sense. We'll see more detail.
Megan, can you save me some flipping through here and tell me how much is already in the lime kiln restoration reserve?
We haven't established one yet.
I thought there was five thousand last year to put a roof over one of the.
Yeah, that's a budgeted expense. It wasn't a reserve deposit.
Right, but I'm just wondering, so that, was that under Public Works?
Where'd you put that roof for the lime kiln?
Was that in Public Works?
I think that's in Parks.
Oh, wait, maybe up here under lime kiln's maintenance, thirty-six twenty-two?
Yeah, that four thousand.
Okay, so thirty-six, the four thousand there now.
And that, and that four thousand was, was designed to put the roof on that?
Exactly, yeah.
I guess number six or number seven, whichever one it is, but it didn't make any sense for us to put a roof on it if we didn't know what we were going to do with that lime kiln. Why waste the money? My goal is that we will, I'll come to the select board and say, let's establish a reserve account, so we can put the money that we're not spending on that into that reserve account, and then we'll have another four thousand in theory to put into it for next year. It's a little bit of money, but at least it's, it's something to start with. The pathway reserve deposit line, I did not put any request in there for this year. There's twenty-five thousand dollars in the current year, and what else was there? That's essentially the changes. Are there other questions, Helen?
First, why is Pathways' deposit under Parks and Recreation? It's not part of that group at all.
We don't have a separate.
It's always been under Public Works.
Well, it, it was, it was under this for this current year, so.
Pathways have never been under Public Works, as far as I know, unless it was sidewalk construction.
It is sidewalks, yes. And also, Jeff Scott is out of town and hard to reach, but I did get a message back from him that right now, the estimate for Rockport's part of that Route One is fifty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars. As near as I can tell, there's only forty-three thousand five hundred available at this time in the Pathways Reserve, though I, I asked Bill if that was, or Jeff, if that was correct, and I've not heard back from him. I'm concerned if there's, from what Jeff has heard from Audra, who is the point person on this, the estimates may be, the bids may be coming in higher.
Sure.
And I wonder, have you, have you talked to Audra about that?
I haven't yet. I was copied on that email too, from, from Jeff.
Okay.
And I had asked Megan what we had, and she's going to pull that number up too, what we have in reserve, so we have that number.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned about not putting anything in here, because that is a contract that we are obligated to meet.
And I was kind of waiting to hear back from Audra, Audra as well, and of course, this had been printed before this discussion had come up too, so.
We previously had estimates for that, right, that we previously had estimates for that, that we had enough, right?
Originally, a hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred to be split between Camden and Rockport, our portion being the fifty-one five ninety-four. But essentially, Jeff sent me that, and then he said those were the wrong numbers. He was going to send something else, and he sent the same numbers again. So I'm, I'm just concerned if we take, if we don't put anything in, we're going to be caught with our, yeah, up the creek without a paddle.
Well, that's not really the case, because we've already paid Camden twenty-six thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. So that's why that reserve is reduced to the thirty-five thousand it is. So assuming, assuming our total cost is the fifty-one five, that leaves us with a balance of twenty-four seven essentially, which thirty-five thousand will cover that next.
Okay, so the current reserve is what?
Thirty-five thousand. Thirty-five thousand nine ten.
How much do we owe, according to the?
Twenty-four seven.
So we have a little bit of leeway in the reserve currently of about eleven thousand dollars to cover any increase in that, in that payment. But it's something that we need to look at, obviously, and make sure that we have the accurate numbers. The project hasn't gone out to bid yet.
I thought it had, but I could be wrong.
I don't think, I'll check on it though.
Can we just double-check too, Megan, that seventy-five twenty-five has always been in the, the park budget?
Well, you can see that it's been there since sixteen seventeen.
Oh, well, that's true. Okay, all right.
Any other questions in the parks budget?
People might notice that that Walker Park reserve deposit for ten thousand dollars was turned down by the manager, and to be honest, I don't think we really have an issue with that. You know, we've looked at the playground equipment over there, and it's really not in terrible shape. New equipment's terribly expensive, you know, thirty thousand, forty thousand, but I don't think there's any urgency there, so.
Well, my thought, if, if the Walker Park seawall project hadn't been, I think, probably more important, then we certainly would have, I would have supported that ten thousand dollar request there. Recreation is up next on page two thirty-five, two thirty-six. So there are really two, two major changes here. Line thirty ninety under purchased in contractual services under miscellaneous contracts. As you'll probably recall, there was quite a bit of work done at the fields, with Sports Fields, which is a professional company that comes in and does basically ball field rehabilitation. The reason it's ten thousand recommended for this year is that we should now be able to just maintain the fields for four thousand dollars, which probably includes some aeration and some fertilizer and that type of thing, and then there's six thousand dollars for brown-tailed moth treatment for the March Jones Fields. And that again involves, it'll involve some tree thinning by Public Works, which obviously won't cost us anything, but it will involve some trimming of the nests out of the trees, and then the plan is to inject them as well. I don't think the six thousand dollars will get us to inject every tree. At the same time, we don't have to inject every tree. But if we can start a cycle and get that cycle and process going, I think that'll go a long ways to protecting the residents and the visitors to that, to those fields. I should have a, I should have a better number after tomorrow, actually. We're going to be me, meeting with the arborist tomorrow at the fields to see what his plan is and what his thought is. The cost will also be mitigated, because Public Works will be able to help with the contractor, go in and dispose of the nests, burn the nests as they're being cut out of the trees, so that their, their company isn't doing that as well.
Just a question on, I thought I had read somewhere that burning them wasn't very good, because it, the, whatever causes the problems is transferred into the, the smoke. Is that not the case?
It should, the state recommends two different ways. Number one is burning them, and number two is to put them in, soak them in soapy, like a dish soapy water, over a day or two. The problem is those nests are really, they're, they're really not permeable. I mean, they're very, very strong nests, if you've ever seen one. So burning them really is the most effective way, and if you can do it in a limited manner, then you're taking care of the issue hopefully. And by doing it in February or March, you know, then you have time for those hairs to, whatever's left, to dissipate into the ground, hopefully.
Will the same contractor do all of our fields and parks, the same arborist?
The same arborist will be doing Walker Park, as I said earlier, doing the demonstration there for free, and then doing March Jones. That's the, that's the idea, yes.
I don't remember the injection being talked about by the state foresters. The theory that it makes the leaves taste bad, so that.
It's not that they, I mean, they might taste bad, but the theory is that the, the poison will enter when the caterpillars come out, when they're budding, budding, then they'll eat the leaves, and then they'll, they'll die.
And then they'll take in that poison.
They'll take in that poison, yeah. Problem we have, the reason why you have to do it year after year is because if you think about the areas around March Jones Park that the town doesn't own, we don't control, there're going to be brown-tailed moths there, and once you have a tree that's, doesn't have any caterpillars in it, they're going to go from one tree to that one, so that's why you need to continue doing that treatment, so over a few years. And hopefully, it's a nice wet spring, and then it.
We get the fungus.
Yeah, then you get the fungus, and we'll kill them off anyway. And as I said before, and the board knows this, I dealt with this for the last six years in my previous position. And the, the entire town was infested by these little pesky creatures, so it's not a fun thing to deal with. And I, I feel, I, I commiserate with those people that, that are residents, that the town can't go and, you know, we, we can't go on to private property and be able to help them. So all we can do is provide them as much information as we possibly can about what they can do. I mean, now's the time of year to be trimming the nests. Of course, you know, I can't see Eric climbing up an oak tree to trim nests out of a.
They're pretty high up in my trees.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So then you have to hire an arborist or a company, and then it costs money. It's a never, it's not a good solution, but it's really the only solution, as far as I'm concerned. The other major change here is under the capital items, line seventy-three oh six, equipment. This is a new initiative. This is a proposal to purchase a commercial-grade mower for the Public Works Department. And we could have split it between all the different buildings that we intend on mowing, but it just felt better to go through recreation. When I started here, there's been a concern about the fact that the high-visibility town buildings, like the town office, the Harbor Park, Public Safety Building, and the ball fields on occasion, the contracts call for a mowing once a week, and that hasn't been sufficient in some of those buildings. And so my feeling is if we can use forced labor, the Public Works Department, purchase a mower, we'll be able to, number one, save the cost of mowing from the contractor for those, contracts for those buildings, which is about forty-six hundred dollars per year. So in a three-year time period, we're paying for the mower. The mower should last us conservatively ten years, if we're looking at a commercial mower, probably longer than that. So then in the seven years after we've paid it off, we're going to end up saving thirty-two thousand dollars. But more importantly, we're mowing when we need to mow. Oftentimes, and I saw this, even though I didn't start until August, I saw that there were issues when the mowing, mowing would happen, the next day, there'd be a rain shower, and then there would be, you know, a nice sunny day, seventy, eighty degrees, and the lawns looked like absolute garbage. So this will allow us to do that. Also with the ball fields, I haven't factored in any discount there, but I'm a baseball umpire. I umpired a lot of games at the March Jones Fields, and I noticed that there were times when the field needed to be mowed. And so I've heard, I heard those complaints as well, and I know Mike did about.
A lot.
The ball field's not being mowed, and again, you might mow it your one time a week on a Monday, by Wednesday comes around or Thursday, and there are more games there, and the grass is too tall, and it just isn't, it's not a well-playable field. So I think this will help in that regard.
Good question. Where would the mower be kept, and how would it be transported? Do we need to buy a, what, trailer, trailer?
Yeah, yeah, we've talked about buying just a small utility trailer, and we think we can absorb that. They're, they're pretty inexpensive. That way, it's not being constantly moved off a bigger trailer. It'd be dedicated to that mower.
Don't you guys have the one you take to paint?
We, we do.
Machine around on, so we don't maybe not have to.
In storage, you have a place to store it?
Yep.
So I, I have a question. I mean, and I've noticed this throughout the whole budget, and I ask this about every year. This is, the budget is based on six months' worth of information? Is that correct?
I guess I don't understand the question.
So the numbers we have for the actuals are six months?
For the actuals, yes, those are through December.
So, and I look at the thirty-three twenty-five water usage fees, you know, thirteen hundred round numbers, and it says it's based on actual numbers when you look at the supporting documentation. So I'm just trying to figure out how thirteen hundred becomes fifty-seven hundred.
Which line are you looking at?
Thirty-three twenty-five.
Is that, is that two quarters in there, or is that probably? Yeah, so we're billed quarterly when it comes to water. There is a rate increase as all, as well as being implemented, correct? What was the percentage? So we're billed quarterly, that is one quarter that's captured in that? So we're billed quarterly, that is one quarter that's captured in that? In that billing for the, for the first six months? And then there was a seven percent rate increase that's going into effect as well. So sometimes you're gonna, that six month number doesn't actually catch everything. So if we, for instance, the billing for that quarter, for the last quarter of the, of the year, happened in January. So you don't capture it in that snapshot that you're looking at.
Is this a definitive, I mean, is that increased something that they've given us in writing already?
Yes.
Because they did that last year and then they backpedaled.
We have it in writing now.
All right.
So do we have some savings from the capital item? Like, is there a line item that shows we're taking away some contracting?
You'll see it in, in the other departments. So you'll see it in the town office building, you'll see it in the Public Safety Building. And then the harbor, that's been a confusing issue. So the harbor is split into the harbor master and then, and then the park. So there isn't a, one line there that I can.
What's, what would be the number if we combined all those?
I'm looking at like forty-six hundred dollars a year. That's basically what I'm looking at as a savings. So a three-year buyback for the mower and then a savings over the next seven minimums.
And that's based on a one time per week, you know?
Yeah.
That's hitting that twice, well, twice a week. In those months that it needed, a weeks that it needed because of the dandelions and.
So that would be town buildings, but not like Memorial Park?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't do that the first year. I think we'd have to, we'd have to look at how it works.
See how we can.
How busy we are.
Town buildings and then maybe ball fields is needed, as you said, as opposed to the actual park where you're not actually conducting an activity like the ball fields.
Has the same train of thought been given to the many part-time people that the highway has for consolidation into one part-time, one full-time?
I haven't looked at it yet. And that's one of the things, you know, as I said, with six months under my belt, I haven't, there's a lot of other things that I want to look at. And so you're, the budget for next year when we're sitting here will probably look a lot different than it does now.
And I think that's something that Ken and Doug and I had touched on in one year where one person would be earmarked for the mowing, for all the odd jobs.
Yeah. So. Well, we've, we've kind of done that this year with one of the Public Works employees. It's, he's buildings and grounds maintenance and just as an example of that, the Opera House here. Instead of having the Opera House manager looking at the AC system and the heat and the HVAC, you know, the HVAC system, the electrical and all that sort of thing, I'm having the Public Works Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Person take over those initiatives. And it, it's worked much, much better that way. It solved a lot of confusion. Perfect example is the library heat that went out on a Saturday in the temporary library. So I get a text from the librarian that says, hey, the heat's off, what, who do I contact? I said, well, guess what? Instead of calling a contractor and paying, call Public Works. And within half an hour, the heat's back on. So it saves money dramatically when we do that. So we're doing little things like that as we continue reviewing the operations.
Mike, on line fifty-three forty, can you just drill down into that a little bit deeper, the eighty-two fifty? And year-to-date, seven fifty-one, sort of mark, mark's question.
Why the seven fifty-one so low? And, or the others are higher, based on the seven fifty-one?
For two years, we didn't spend anything and then, you know, when, then it went up to seventy-eight hundred. We budgeted eighty-two hundred, but we've only spent seven hundred and fifty-one. So just remind me, is that for like the ball fields we're putting up?
She's pulling it up. And just in my experience, and I may be completely wrong here, but I'm gonna throw a guess out while Megan's pulling this up. Generally speaking, a lot of that money in recreation is spent on, for supplies in the spring for the ball fields. So if you're purchasing, you know, marking, marking line fertilizer.
I didn't know if it had, did it have anything to do with repairing the backstop?
Would be repairing, could be in that, right.
Which your point is that that was already done.
Well, I, I just didn't know, you know, again, I just looked here where there seemed to be, you know, inconsistencies in some numbers. Well, I, I don't mean to hold things up, maybe we can.
Last year it was to purchase supplies for the fields and most of these purchases were May. Actually, all but two of them were in May, the other two were in December. So that's what makes up the seventy-eight, seventy-four, is materials for the fields.
So presumably this May, that seven fifty-one will jump up to.
Right.
Okay.
And that's, if you think about it, that's when the ball fields are in use.
Yeah, yeah, when we pay the umpires.
That's right.
Thanks for keeping that line item steady.
Fortunately, it doesn't come from the town to pay for the umpires. Because that certainly would be a conflict if it did, Doug. Any other questions about recreation at all? Public Works, so that ought to be a quick one, right?
Yeah.
So that's on page one ninety-five. So I should have also mentioned before, obviously, we're in a lot of personnel in the budgets that we've looked at already. So I've stayed consistent with a three percent increase in wages across the board. You will notice that there are some percentages that are different than three percent when you're looking at the wage lines. And that's, some of it's due to rounding, because we do round, we don't put the exact number in there because it's a nightmare when you're doing tax commitment if you try to have exact dollar figures in there. There's also some step increases built in, in the union contract for, for Public Works that looks like it's higher than the three percent because in reality they are. We have some longstanding employees that get an additional amount on top of their three percent that's built into the union contract. So you do see some differences in there for the percentages.
Is that the level increases that we talk about in Midco Solid Waste? I'm just trying to.
Yep, the three percent.
Level, level increases.
The step increases.
Step increases, that's, okay, thank you.
Yeah, they have a wage plan as part of their contract. Workers' compensation is down substantially in the previous year, about forty percent. And health insurance is down also about twelve percent in Public Works. And those, again, workers' comp is essentially based on our, our good history, which is obviously a good thing. What did the rate drop from, Megan?
Uh, like one point two to point six.
Yeah, so the experience modification went from one point two to point six. So one is the break even point, if you will. So having the investment that the town has made in safety programs and being a SHAPE-approved town, which the town received that award this past fall, that type of thing does translate into, into some savings down the road. The health insurance is based on what we actually have in there for the employees and what they're, what they're participating in for benefits. Line thirty forty, under purchased and contractual services, legal fees, lease purchase agreements. So we haven't, the town hasn't built in, into individual departments, any money for bond counsel or for, for lease purchase agreements or for bonds. You'll see that in, under the Finance Department, too, that we've built in some money for bond counsel as well. That's not an item that's covered in our legal, our general legal services contract that we have, so we're building that into the budget.
But this one is for leases or?
That's for lease purchase because we're proposing to, you'll see later on, we're proposing to purchase a, a new truck to replace one as part of the capital improvement program, so that'll be a lease purchase agreement.
We're required to get a legal opinion for anything over a hundred thousand dollars, so. I saw a reference to requirements and I was wondering what that requirement was, a hundred thousand?
Hundred thousand, yeah. Professional Services, line thirty ninety-five, that's five thousand dollars.
What is that?
That's to cover any engineering work that we may need for any of the road projects that we have coming up. For instance, if we're looking at replacing large culverts, for instance, on Porter Street, then we have to have some, either permitting that's done by engineer, professional engineer, or some design work that needs to be done. It's a very small amount that we put in there, but we feel like we've got to have some, some money budget in there because we're, we're looking at the budget, whenever we have anything like this, we go, well, where are we gonna take that money from? So we've built it into the budget to try to be more transparent when it comes to that type of thing, instead of bearing it into a road construction line, for instance. The rent of equipment, line thirty-four forty, is up twenty-five hundred dollars. The reason for that is that we'll need to be renting more equipment, most likely as we do the work this next summer. Any of the road projects that will be under construction.
Did you cover professional, the professional services?
What line number?
Thirty ninety-five.
Yes, yeah, I just talked about that with engineering for some of the.
Oh, engineering, I'm sorry, I, I missed the number of the line, okay, sorry.
Yep.
Yep.
There's really not a lot of other changes until you get down into the capital items.
I have a good question.
Yeah.
Thirty-six thirty-two, road painting. This, I presume, is that the fog lines and the crosswalks and things like that?
It's just the fog lines.
Just the fog lines. Because most of the crosswalks and the parking zones are on, on Pascal Commercial, et cetera, up to. And therefore covered by the state.
There, the town has to pay for those, what was that, Megan?
Nothing in there.
Okay, that makes sense. So the, the crosswalks comes out of the painting supplies line because Public Works does the labor for those.
Oh, okay.
So we don't have to hire somebody, the company to come in, like with the fog lines, you have to hire a striping company that has the equipment, the machinery, the large machine to do the striping.
Thank you.
The crosswalk by the market basket, to the sidewalk to nowhere, yeah.
It's not a sidewalk to nowhere, it goes to the market basket.
We have, we have to pay for that one, too, that goes across Route One.
Really?
Because we instituted, I think, the request for the crossing light.
So you're saying that Public Works can't do that, those stripings on their own, that the state does it and then we pay the state?
No, we, we can do those. We did that one. They gave, they gave us the fifty thousand dollars worth of light, we agreed to paint the crosswalk.
Yeah.
Long-range planning, Mark.
So just at the top, do we have, it says nine employees, but then I, I can only make the math look into. Eight, is there?
Missing the.
We have seven heavy equipment operators.
There's seven, seven heavy equipment operators.
Oh, okay.
Back under capital items, we're proposing to buy, to purchase a twenty-twenty Western Star that will replace a current truck. And this will be a larger truck than what we currently have, it'll be what's called a Wheeler. So it has a larger box on it to be able to carry more material at one time. So I don't know if you want to touch base on that a little bit more, Mike?
Is, is town and parking and things become more needed? We, we're gonna be moving more snow in the winter. Out, rather than just trying to hide it here and there, we're gonna be hauling more snow. The, this truck, and, and as well as material with road projects, we'll be hauling more gravel as well. But, but for snow, the trucks that we have now haul seven yards, this truck would haul fourteen yards, so twice as much as one truck. And the way it would be set up, we wouldn't have to put the sander in and out, it would come with a sander in the floor that is left there. It's called a side dump. So you just, we could use that truck after sanding, remove the salt and fill it with snow and not have to spend a couple hours.
So other than moving snow and what else are you gonna do with it?
It's gonna plow.
It'll still be a plow.
It's gonna have a route, just like the seven yard truck would have, we'll be doing the exact same.
Haven't we in the past contracted out with people to come move snow for us? I mean, I think Camden still does, I don't know.
We have and you're at their mercy, I mean, it's a hundred bucks an hour, eighty to a hundred, it's.
A hundred and fifty for a truck, I mean.
Right, but, but you got that, you have that truck already, I mean, to plow, to do routes as well.
So this is replacing a current truck, right?
That's what I'm saying, you know, what we currently have versus going a little bit larger is a significant piece of money.
Sure.
So could you keep what you have and subcontract out to pull snow for many more years versus spending the extra money?
It's not. And it's not just snow as well, it's, it's, it's.
Materials.
You, you're hauling twice as much material with, with that truck.
And this is a, the truck, the life expectancy of the truck is twelve years.
Right.
So we'll be looking at basically a six-year lease purchase agreement with this one. So we can extend so that the payment isn't, isn't as much.
In reality, it would be much easier if I could stick with the seven yard, it's needed. So I've had to figure out to make this work and it, it is something we do need. It's not just a wish.
Yeah, what's two, what did we say?
Two fifteen.
Yeah.
Quite how fancy a truck you get, but in that.
Plus, of course, the interest of the life of the lease purchase.
This is the lease payment, right.
Also under the capital, line seventy, I need my glasses, seventy-three seventy, public safety equipment. We feel that it's, we don't have any AEDs in any of the trucks currently. And we think it's important to start putting them into some of the trucks, especially, for instance, the director's truck where he's out on the different job sites and the like. He's trained in the use, all the guys are trained in the use of them. But we feel that we've got them in the buildings, so now it would be nice to have some in the trucks, especially where they're out into the public, riding, riding through.
Would one of those go in the wastewater truck as well, or could it?
It could, yes.
They're out as much and.
Yep.
I, I do have a question with regards to. Refresh me, Megan or any of the board members. We, the, the state gave us some money, I think, to repair the old salt shed. And I think we budgeted some last year for that. Has that been completed yet?
Thirty thousand?
No, it, it's still in the works, it's not been a simple project.
No, but I mean, it's.
It, it, it's been worked on.
Actually, yeah, and on the top of that, underneath the capital items, Mark, sand salt shed repairs, there's forty thousand dollars in this year's budget. And it's twenty thousand dollars proposed in next year's budget to go towards that repair.
And that's to go with the twenty-six or so I remember the state gave us? I think that is twenty-six plus or minus.
So is that a total of eighty-six thousand to do those repairs?
We're still waiting on engineers and, and contractors to give us some estimates. It's been difficult trying to find somebody to be able to, it's, it's an unusual shaped building, obviously. And it's a metal building as well, so. Yes.
Right, the storage quonset hut, right.
So could you, is there, is there a limb that you could go out on and tell us that it might be done this?
It's possible.
Coming year, I mean.
I would like to say yes.
Yeah, no, I just, it's just one of those things that we want to get.
Yeah, no, we've been trying to, we've been trying to, I hate to say spitball ideas, but look at, look at things that are, can we do it less expensively? I mean, the first price we got was extremely high and I said, well, that's not gonna work, so let's figure something else out. So we've been delaying a little bit just because we want to try to get it done as cost-effectively as possible.
Thank you.
And of course, the insurance company at some point is gonna tell us, you need to do it now. So, but we're, we're trying to do it as best as we can. Road construction and paving, that's the, the big line, seventy-six oh five. And this is one of the lines where I had said that, you know, I'd leave the department head's number in there. I know you all have talked about what the need is for road construction and paving. Obviously, the bond had passed, which will help us start, start to get caught up. You know, when you're looking at that, that number, not all of that is obviously paving. There's quite a few other projects that are in that bond as well, vehicle exhaust replacement systems, the town pier, things like that are also in there. I reduced the number to three hundred thousand partly because Public Works is going to be busy. So there's only so much that we can do with the bond and with the continued work, the normal work. As I said before in the opening, you know, we will be bidding out a lot of those projects that are in there so that Public Works can continue their work and not fall further behind than we already have been.
But we do want to try to do as much as we can.
Yes.
As well.
And we will be, as I said before, breaking up the projects probably into a two-year construction cycle. And actually, we'll be presenting that plan to the select board at their next meeting and. in March ninth.
So this three hundred thousand is in addition to certain projects in the infrastructure bond?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is to continue on with the work and try to, the bond is to try to catch up a little bit to where we should be. And then, as I said, I haven't fully looked at the capital plan. We've continued on, but the plan is to do a lot of work with Mike and Public Works over the next six months or so to plan out and really analyze the roads, to see what the conditions are, to apply basically two different grading systems to it, one that had been developed here, but then also the state's version of their software, the road management system software, and try to mesh the two together so that we have a real good understanding of what we need to do.
Is there, and I'll go out on that limb again myself, is there any benefit to jointly bidding with Camden for work to be done simultaneously so that one company could come in and take care of both towns to which you might get a better per-ton rate for asphalt, for instance?
There potentially is. It depends on, I've seen, I've seen the advantages come across when you're doing the same street, for instance, at the same time, so that the companies coming in and they're starting in Rockbord or starting in Camden and just continuing on the street that's split between the two towns. That's where you're going to see a savings in my experience. Obviously, I haven't been here, so I'd have to look to Mike.
I mean, you know, one company's coming in and they don't have to move their equipment out of town. They can just keep working rather than...
A lot of it is mobilization cost and, you know, like Bill said, there could be a little bit of benefit. It's not going to be a huge benefit. It will be a small number. But the guys that are coming in paving are, you know, were bidding that out. They're still buying thousands of tons every day. So they're at that low number when it's...
Well, I just think it would be a benefit to us if one company bids out a hundred ton versus twenty-eight for us and seventy for them.
He's still buying that number. There's a bottom line for the makers.
Two separate companies versus one company, you might get a better...
Yeah, there's potential.
Anyway, I'm just, I'm asking if there's an opportunity to...
Yeah, there's potential.
To look into that perhaps, I don't know how you guys feel.
Well, and that's a perfect discussion around the Walker Park seawall. When we bid that out, we bid it as a joint package and as a separate package so we could see if we would realize a savings if we did it now with the abutting landowner. And there was no difference if we did it in the fall on a separate timeframe, which I was really surprised with because I thought that there would be the mobilization costs of a contractor coming in, but there wasn't any difference. Four out of the five bidders said, no, it's the same price, whether they do it with the abutment or whether they do it in the fall later on as a separate project. So I was a little, but it's an opportunity. It's worth having that discussion, I think. I think Helen had a question. Sorry.
Seventy-six oh six, Mount Pleasant Street. That's been kicked down the lane year after year after year. Is any of the three hundred thousand going to go to finishing that off, that project?
Finishing, you have to give me...
Mount Pleasant Street, we did some emergency work, what, two seasons ago?
Right.
On the gravel section or the...
The gravel section. That was becoming impassable.
Yep.
And I thought there was work done, there was a top, but it needed to be topped over the final, and that final was never put on there. So isn't that, if...
We've brought it in from each end. I think, you know, I think the years, three or four years ago, the select board that was here said, we're going to see if we can get this paved through. I think the select board we have now has said, you know, let's repair it, keep it dirt in the center. I haven't heard that that has to be paved in the last year and a half. So we've covered like ninety percent of the houses now. I think there's two or three left.
With pavement. We did some pavement.
With pavement on each side. And we've rebuilt the muddy sections in between. So there is still some dirt.
But has that...
And that will, you know, that will get muddy to a point, but not like I hoped we had four years ago.
I was under the impression that it needed to be finished because...
I've not been told that that has to be paved all the way through, Mike.
Are you talking, having it paved all the way through? Or are you talking about...
That was the impression that I got, that was the goal.
That had been, and they started talking, you know, bond to put them...
I think the imperatives are two different imperatives. When you say that had to be paved, it's from the perspective of not throwing good money after bad on the washouts.
Right.
And when Mike says it had to be repaved, it's mandated from the select board.
Right.
Right.
So two different uses of the same word.
So the road's been repaired, so it's passable. It will still get muddy. It's a dirt road. And we've paved in from each end at this point to cover all but, I would say, three of the houses, I believe it is.
Are the residents happy?
Sort of a pound and wise choice in not paving the rest? Are we putting at risk the work that's already been done?
With the work that's there, I mean, we may have to do some work on the top, but the base that's there is a good base. They'll be there. There's some big stone.
And we're not going to lose the value of the work we've done.
We're not going to lose none. And that still is, you know, you're still looking at a four to five hundred thousand-dollar number to finish paving that.
Just wondering.
For very small traffic. We have some other higher traffic that needs attention.
The capital improvement committee feels, has listed as being underway. And it would be in the best interest of the town to pave the entire dirt road.
For four hundred thousand dollars?
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand is what they have on page two eighty-nine. I mean, this, like, so this has been kicked down past?
Yeah.
Year after year after year.
But if we're not losing anything other than the inconvenience of people who've chosen to live in, on a dirt road?
Right, yeah.
In terms of...
Well, yeah, I mean, without being harsh about it, but when people did choose to live there, they knew it was a dirt road. So, I mean, we're working on it.
Our job, we have to keep it...
If we had all the money in the world, no problem.
Right, right.
But we've got some hard choices.
Passable.
It's like when people buy the airport and then they complain, sorry, not to suggest these people are complaining, but then they, then those people complain about the noise and it's like, well, you did buy it next door in an airport, so...
They had a legitimate complaint a couple of years ago that has been addressed. I mean, the road has been improved dramatically.
That's my point. It's been improved and so, but...
And if it gets rutted up, we can do, you know, some small repairs.
Yeah, it needs to be passable, you know, and for sure, that's our responsibility, yeah. But little by little, we have been working on the paving, but it's a huge nut.
Recall that, recall that that section was also in the mix when we pulled together our infrastructure bond. And as we went through the prioritization and sorting of what lives and what dies on that list, it fell off the list.
That was scary.
So...
Yeah, so I think the direction from the select board that we've received is we're not going to be paving the section of that, of the gravel section. But that it'll continue to get maintenance to ensure that it remains passable as a gravel road. It's not going to get to the point where it's not passable where I guess it has been a few years ago.
It was pretty bad a couple of weeks ago.
Was it? Yeah, well, the freezing and thawing that we see, yeah.
Coming up from the South Hope side there.
Yep.
Yeah, it was very rutted right as you hit that first corner because my friend bought that house with the blueberry fields. Yeah, it was pretty bad.
Probably going to lose friends over time. I'm going to drive out and see him.
I'll have to come visit you.
Duh, I'm sorry.
Well, my question is, like, because I hate to see the paving budget underfunded.
Sure.
And that was a surprise as a new person on the budget committee last year that has underfunded for quite a while. So I was on board with the infrastructure bond. So we have a million in spending just on roads and another three hundred thousand. We don't have the capacity to do that all in one year, I'm assuming from what you said earlier. It's going to take two years.
Well, I'm going to say probably two years. Mike and I are in the process of putting together a schedule. And so I'll know a lot more next week after we meet because we're refining all the numbers that were, as estimates in there. So we can actually see what it is that we can get done and what items that we need to completely contract out for so that we can hopefully get as much of it done as we possibly can. And out of that million dollars, I mean, there's, I know that, for instance, the old Rockland Street, that's going to be contracted out. The whole project is going to be contracted out. And there very well may be others on there that we can contract out completely, saying, breaking it down to ditching and, or whatever it is into a contract and just have it done. The benefit of Public Works obviously helping to do some of the work is that we get more money, we get more work done for the money. So if we just hire somebody, a company to come in and do the paving, Public Works can do the ditching, then we, you know, we're going to get more work. But it may take longer to do it. It may take the two years. So I'll, we'll know more next week when it comes to what the schedule looks like and what we realistically think that we can get done.
So are you thinking, we're saying two years out and then we can get to like more of a normal, because I don't think we should be doing this every ten years. It's continually taken out of bond to get caught up. That doesn't make any sense.
Yeah.
And what should this number be?
Well, that's a...
It's like a huge variance.
It's somewhere between its current place and one point two million dollars. Last year when we were doing this, we calculated based on what normal road maintenance should be, how many, how often we should be putting this shim coat on versus redoing. The difference is about double.
Yes.
Per mile with the number of miles we have in the town. When we did the math on that, it's a huge number, one point two. So it's some number between here and there. And I think that a plan, I think the bond will cover our immediate needs in the short term, but over the next four or five years, bumping this up at some level of thirty to fifty thousand dollars a year so that by the time the benefits of the bond are waning, there's enough money in there to be able to do ongoing continuous maintenance for some level that's, again, it may be a half million, it may be three-quarters of a million, I don't know.
Yep.
That would be an approach to take opposed to doing it all in one year.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. It just can't be two eighty, two thirty, two thirty, two eighty.
No.
And they're requesting seven eighty-eight and it's like, whoa, we're way underfunding this. And this is one of the basics of government we need to, it's so essential to every citizen, so...
Yep. No, I agree completely. And that's really the philosophy that we're looking at, is trying to ramp that number up. You know, and if the select board or budget committee wanted to add more funding to that line, a reasonable amount so that we're not, we certainly would be appreciative of that.
When I heard you were saying that you, with Public Works' involvement in the capital improvement, then could be sort of tapped out in terms of ability to oversee projects?
Sure, absolutely. You know, again, you can stretch the money if you, if you were doing some of the labor yourself for the ditching and things like that. Whereas if you, if you bid out, you know, a road section and have the contractor do the paving and the ditching and the tree removal or whatnot, or culvert replacement, then your money goes, doesn't go as far.
In the same breath, I mean, what isn't being done if they're out doing that?
Absolutely. Yep, it's a give and take.
Yep.
I think probably the plan, once Mike and I discuss it in more detail with the actual numbers in front of us, because again, they're working on putting numbers together, is that we may bid out a lot of it and see what we get back for prices and then look at those numbers and say, okay, what are we looking at? Does it make sense to get all of that done right now? And it may, it may very well make sense. But the way that the prices are currently that we're seeing for construction projects throughout the state, that's probably not going to be the case.
Everybody's busy and everything's high.
Yeah, they can price it accordingly.
Yep.
So I have a couple of questions that run together, and I think you've actually touched, touched on them, but I guess I just wanted to clarify some of this in my mind. So at our next meeting, we have this list of infrastructure projects.
Yes.
You're going to sort of give us a timeline, you know, June we'll be doing this, July we'll be doing that, so that'll be spelled out for us?
It's, I don't know if it'll get that specific to tell you what months we're going to be in, but we're going to say, here's the updated estimates for cost. And here's the things that we know we can start right away. For instance, the Public Works vehicle exhaust system, you know, that can, that's an easy thing, relatively easy.
Can you try to give us sort of a timeline?
We'll give you ballparks, yeah. And we'll give you, and we'll give you an idea as to which ones we're going to be putting out to bid.
Yeah, right.
So that you'll know that and the timeframe for when those bids will be due and when decisions can be made on that.
Then my follow-up question has to do with manpower. And again, you're obviously talking about this, but, you know, historically, our Public Works guys have accumulated a fair amount of comp time over the winter with plowing. Now, this year hasn't been too bad, but they tend to use that comp time during the summer. And so far tonight, we've talked about using them for mowing. We're hoping to use them to reconstitute Memorial Park. They're going to be working on the infrastructure bonds. I mean, realistically, is our crew going to be able to handle all this?
That's part of the discussion.
Right.
That's why we look at, you know, the bidding, the bidding of the projects for the infrastructure bond versus...
And in the past, we've upped the comp. This year, I don't foresee upping that comp time. I think eighty hours is, you know, in the past, we've gone up to a hundred and forty. I don't see that happening this year.
Well, it's just when they use it.
Right, no, I agree. But if we, but if we put it up to a hundred and forty, I mean, that puts me down, you know, two guys a day, basically, through the summer, so...
It's been painful.
Right.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to approach that. It's too much work to be done.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, all right.
Helen.
Okay, are you ready for the sidewalk construction questions?
Sure.
I know Mike has seen it. Have you seen the pathways, a survey of all the sidewalks in the town and their levels?
It's been, it's been a while since I've looked at it.
Yeah, it desperately needs to be updated. I think it's about four years old now.
Sure.
But will those be included? I presume the reason there's nothing in this budget is because it's the two fifty.
Right.
Okay. But you will be taking that survey into account when you look at the two hundred and fifty?
Helen, that survey was included when we had that number brought forth. The pathways committee had their oar and water on what sidewalks to tackle.
Yes.
And that's how that list was generated, was based off that.
A few of them are, but not all of them. Yeah, Main Street is on there, Russell, and Russell, Russell was not on that list. It was, but it does need it. I'm just, I'm just wanting to make sure that that survey is included in your consideration.
Yeah, and as Jeff said, that was what the basis was for, when the board was deciding on the bond package. I believe Jeff was in attendance at the select board meeting.
Presented his recommendation list and we adopted it right off the...
It's just in the past, it's sort of slid off the radar.
Yeah, I don't, I don't operate that way. I try to, the committees that do good work, we try to make sure that we support that and continue what they're recommending because they're doing the legwork. So they're the experts when it comes to that, so... The only other comment I have on Public Works at this point is the library intersection. So there's a little bit of a decrease there. It's still more than what was anticipated with last year when you were budgeting because the cost of it was up about a twenty, two thousand dollars more than what was anticipated dollars more than what was anticipated from last year when you were budgeting. There is an offsetting, some offsetting revenue, which is the state's match to that project. So the overall project is two hundred and forty-two thousand and change, and the state is not reimbursing exactly fifty percent, because they were based on the original estimate, which was two hundred and twenty thousand.
Wasn't that, some of that coming out of the TIF as well?
Yes, the rest is coming from TIF, the downtown TIF.
And that work is actually, for this year, is gonna be starting in the next couple of weeks or something.
Yeah, it starts in this year and then bleeds over into next fiscal year. Should be done by middle of September. And just to throw informational bit out there, that intersection will be, the fence will be moving, the construction fence, Jersey barriers will be put up, so that intersection will be, configuration will be changing while it's under construction. So we will be removing the island that's there currently, as much of it as we can, based on the frost that's there. And so it will be difficult somewhat turning from Union onto Russell for larger vehicles, but we just be aware of that. That will be happening within a couple of weeks.
I presume some sort of big notice will be going out to put the signs and everything.
We'll be sending out a press release, and yeah, we will be.
That's heavily used.
Yep, it is. Yep, so we will be trying to advertise that as much as we possibly can. Any other questions that you might have for this budget? Up next are cemeteries on page two fifty-five. Two fifty-six is the detail. Get it up there. This is another one with the water increases, and it's actually a seven percent increase, not a two percent, which we have in there. In the mowing contracts, again, they're new contracts, so there was an increase in the mowing contracts as well. Under the reserve account, the cemetery committee requested twenty thousand dollars, and that was a start to the columbarium. Helen?
The columbarium is a four-year project. We were misinformed last year. There was supposed to be twenty thousand dollars in the bond for the columbarium the second year. And then they, we were told after the bond came out that we could not put the twenty thousand in there, so our four-year project is now one year behind. If you don't put the twenty thousand in this year, it's now two years behind.
I do have a, what I'd like to do is work with the cemetery committee. I know the committee hasn't met in a while, but I'd like to meet with the cemetery committee so we could, we could look at that plan. I have some thoughts about being able to jumpstart that project without having to affect the tax base. So that's what I'd like to do, is just to meet with the committee and see if we can...
Right now, we've, we're in our second year of a moratorium for Seaview that people can't buy it. This is a money-making project, and the projections, Linda's back there, we could probably easily sell out a fifteen-ish columbarium.
Standing room only.
But we need to have it, and the price is just gonna go up and up if we don't get the money.
Yeah, well, what I'd like to see is, is to sit with the committee and work on a plan and perhaps look at some different ways to fund that, so that we can get it built actually even faster than if we put money into the budget, and then it wouldn't affect it if we looked at maybe, maybe a revenue bond, because as you said, it's a revenue-making item. So if we looked at it from that perspective, or we could look at it...
There's already a plan on the, in the works that's been going on for two years.
Yep, I understand that.
But if we do it through revenue bonds instead of through taxation, why wouldn't we wanna try to do that?
I'm just concerned that, I mean, as I said, we are already a year behind in the plan.
Understand, but you know, Bill is really good with financing, and he's got some skills that maybe we didn't pre, you know, no offense to him, maybe previously have, and so I think that a fresh look at that is a, is a good thing.
Yeah, no, and I, I wanna make sure that the project moves forward. Don't get me wrong. I think it's an important project, and in my, in my previous position, there was always a concerted effort for cemeteries and the like, so don't, don't get me wrong in that regard. It's not that I don't think it's an important project. I think it's a very important project. I think we can get it done faster, though, if we really sit down and maybe revise that plan and look at different funding sources. So, yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's that change there. Under the perpetual care, under revenues, the finance director and I are recommending that that be not counted as a revenue, but moved into, and maybe you wanna explain it a little bit better, so that...
So perpetual care is supposed to be deposited into our investment account for the cemeteries, and it's supposed to become a, adds to our principal balance, in which we can't touch by statute. We can only use interest and earnings on that principal balance. So it really shouldn't be counted as revenue to offset the municipal budget, because we can't use it. It has a designated purpose to be put towards the principal balance, and we're only to use revenues. So we're really shortchanging ourselves here, because it's not an offsetting revenue in this case.
And that will, by adding that money into, into the trust fund, then we'll be increasing that principal balance and therefore increasing the interest that can be used to, for the purpose of perpetual care for the cemeteries.
So is it not appropriate accounting to show the revenue, but then also show it as an expense going into a, into your trust fund, just so you can track the funds or...
Well, you could, but with it hitting our trial balance automatically, it's gonna sit in that holding account until I transfer it, and then it's a simple transfer. It's not reversing it out as a revenue to hit the trial balance and then transferring to the reserve account.
What, what actually should be reflected as a, as a cost for the perpetual care? I mean, if you're, if you're buying a plot of land for your extended future.
As far as I know, those rates are set by the cemetery committee and the select board.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Should it be reviewed, because if we're...
Absolutely should be reviewed, yes.
We can't keep going behind.
Well, again, I think that's...
Yeah.
I've been, I've been involved with several committees, and the cemetery committee is not one that I've been involved in yet with my six months that I've been here, but that's the plan going forward, and I've talked with Linda about that as well. And she's heard my spiel about cemeteries and how I think it's a, it's a moral obligation that we have to make sure that, that they're taken care of and that we do it well, so that we're not in a position of need down the road, so...
Can I just ask, what's leaning and cleaning?
Which?
Our twelve oh five.
That came out of a Moca workshop, what, three years ago, four years ago?
I was afraid to ask.
Straightening and cleaning stones.
Yeah, okay.
If you need to make up that six thousand, though, I think the investment policy committee could take a look at, you know, I mean, the twelve five, we've got some great returns on that fund from the cemetery. I mean, the market's been great, so it's an extra six thousand, I think is totally doable, if we need it, so...
Yep, we'll mark that as a potential.
Certainly in terms of lining and cleaning, we may wanna take a look at some of the other cemeteries and see if there's more work that can be done. We can bring Moca back in, or I'd be willing to work with Mike on that. I have a great deal of training in that area from Moca.
What is Moca?
Hmm?
What is Moca?
Mainland Cemetery Association.
In my previous position, we developed a volunteer effort where we had them come down and train volunteers on how to clean the stones and how to do it properly, and even how to repair.
Yes, I do repair, and I've been trained under Joe, comes in from New York, does the four-day workshops.
Yep.
We did a ten-day restoration repair of Tolman Cemetery and got it on the National Registry.
Yeah, that's great. So maybe that's something that we can jumpstart in the next year or so.
Are you on the cemetery committee, Helen?
Yes. I'm also Moca's legislative liaison.
Any other questions on the cemetery budget?
I don't have one on that, but I'd like to just ask a question with regards to information that might be helpful to us as we go forward, if I might. One, one of which is, we know Camden is going to be improving their wastewater system.
Yes.
To which there'll be an increase to us. Do we have any idea what that will be yet? And I may have missed it in here, or I may not have. And when will we be re-expecting that increase?
That increase will be in the wastewater budget.
So it's in there now, though?
Yeah, we've started, we've actually started planning for that. Three years ago, we knew that they were moving forward with their treatment plan upgrades, so we started making annual reserve deposits to slowly get the users up to an amount that we estimated would be our portion of that bond payment annually, so that they weren't, when Camden did decide to go forward with that project, it wouldn't be a huge hit all at once, and we'd have some money to start paying.
And that's where I'm going with, when, we're building it up now, but at some point we will have to yearly come up with that portion of the payment, right?
Yeah, and at this point, as far as I know, at this point, we're not sure when they're starting that project.
It's just something for us to think about, because, yeah, you know, everything looks good now, but there will be an increase coming. The other thing is the, we talked about years ago, a couple of years, it seems like years ago, the unencumbered money from various lines that haven't been spent. I think there were some that went back to two thousand and four that were just sitting around. I know some of those have been cleaned up, but is there a list that we might be able to see that...
At this point, we don't have any encumbered carried over money. We got rid of all of that or spent it.
All gone?
Yeah.
I mean, not last year's encumbered. I'm talking about stuff that's been set near for years.
The select board, I had the select board clean that up two years ago, and that leftover money rolled in the undesigned fund balance.
And that's what I couldn't remember.
And then the remaining ones were spent on what they were designated for.
Anything else? Okay, I guess we're done for tonight.